We'll call the meeting to order. Let the record reflect, all board members are present. Recognition of visitors and guests, we welcome all of you here this evening. We have a nice crowd. 1.3, 1.31, public participation. I've had no public participation requests. 1.32, recognition of students, staff, and community. We have one item to recognize. Congratulations to Lynda Nuga-Bauer for being named the AA Speech Coach of the Year by the Minnesota Speech Coaches Association. So we'd like to recognize Lynda for her good work. Okay, moving on to approval of agenda 2.0, 2.1, consent and main agendas.
I move approval of both the consent and main agenda.
Motion by Lori.
Second by Tom.
Second by Tom. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.0, approval of minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the August 15, 2023, school board meeting minutes and accept the committee meeting minutes as included.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Erin. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
You're opposed?
I'm opposed to the committee meeting minutes and an item that we'll discuss later in the evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion carries. 4.0, items on the consent agenda.
I approve the items under the consent agenda.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Adam, to approve the items on the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.0, main agenda. 5.1, monthly financial overview.
I should have the revenues and expenditures report through the end of August, so we're two months into our fiscal year. So there's not been a lot of activity. The revenues are right on track with where they should be, a little bit ahead of last year. The expenditures will catch up eventually, but we're about half of where we are in the fiscal year. Nothing new or unusual during the month. The auditors are in the process of conducting the audit, and we expect that in November.
Okay, any questions for Dave? Hearing done, thank you, Dave. 5.2, approve second reading of policies 504, 506, 524, and 601.
I move to approve the second reading of policies 504, 506, 524, and 601.
Second, Woodboom.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.3, approve resolution appointing election judges for November 7, '23, school district special election, roll call vote.
I move approval of appointing the election judges for November 7, 2023.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Steve. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Dudley.
Aye.
Mr. Lorenz.
Aye.
Ms. Schute.
Aye.
Mr. Krantz.
Aye.
Mr. Bloom.
Aye.
Mr. Schneider.
Aye.
Mr. Woodboom.
Aye. And motion carries. 5.4, consideration of the proposed 2023 levy.
So at the operations committee, the proposed levy was presented. At this time, we usually approved the maximum, so that would be the recommendation from the operations committee to approve the maximum. Currently, right now, it's estimated at $8,925,880 and change, which shows roughly at 12.82%. And most of that is really due to bringing back the VIBE program and the increased enrollment in that program.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the levy as presented as a maximum.
Okay, motion by Steve.
Second. Woodboom.
Second by Matt. Any discussion?
I just want to make sure you're clear. You are approving maximum, not a number. You don't approve a number until December, okay? So...
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.5, approve to stop the truth in taxation hearing.
So right now, the recommended action is to approve the truth in taxation hearing for December 19, which is our regular December meeting, at 6:00 PM, right here in the bandroom. And we've usually done the actual hearing that time, so...
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the truth in taxation hearing for December 19 at 6:00 PM.
Motion by Matt.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Lori. Taxation meeting will be held here on December 19 at 6:00 PM. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approve the DAP agreement, DAP agreement.
This was presented to the instructional committee with recommendation for approval. It's the same as it's been the last few years. There's not really an increase in costs, so it's $3,220 for the year, 28 dates.
I move approval of the date agreement with the YMCA.
Second, Woodboom.
Motion by Lori, second by Matt, to approve the DAP agreement with the YMCA. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.7, approve student-teacher agreement with Mankato State University.
This would be re-upping. We actually have a teacher candidate that will be coming and or is working in the district, working on their degree and licensure, so we've generally brought these to the school board for approval. And the recommendation from the instructional was to approve it.
I make a motion, we approve the teachers' agreement with Mankato State University.
Second by Tom.
Motion by Steve, second by Tom, to approve the student-teacher agreement with Mankato State University. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.8, approve a memorandum of understanding with Century College for interpreter training.
Memorandum, yeah. So this memorandum was brought to the instructional committee. It'll be the first one that we've ever done. This is actually for an individual who is doing work to become a certified interpreter. So the recommendation from the instructional committee is to approve the agreement.
I move to approve a memorandum of understanding with Century College for interpreter training.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion by Erin, second by Lori, to approve the memorandum of understanding with Century College for interpreter training. Is this a yearly thing, or...
One time. Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.9, discussion, approved property lease.
So our current property lease for the Krelshine property comes to an end, and with the potential of what's going on with the watershed and their project next summer, basically, there's, the conversation is to utilize the average cost for the lease of what is the average around here for rent, and continue the property lease for at least one more year with the current tenant. Dave can probably fill in more, or may have a say on some of that.
Basically, we're not even sure how much will be left next year that's tillable by the time they take their permanent and temporary easements out. I think we're down in the 80-acre range now, not even sure. But, so it's going to be a minimal amount for next year, for sure, until the watershed is done with their work. So rather than go out for bids when we're still in this boat, I thought it might be a good idea just to extend it one more year until we're past that and everything is kind of set back up.
Okay, any further questions?
So it's just for one season, or it's for one year extended for the contract that was?
That's what I would recommend at this point.
Well, they know how many acres it's going to be disturbed this year.
Well, we've usually figured it out, kind of when the growing season comes, how much it will be. The equipment you use farming can pretty much tell us exactly.
If it's the west side of the property, you're talking probably 35 acres, and they're going to take some from there, too, correct?
Correct. So it'll probably be down to that 25, between 25 and 30. Most of the east side of it, other than maybe that low ground, will be, and maybe a little bit to the north would be available on the east side of the ditch.
Any further discussion?
I'll abstain from the vote.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the property lease at the amount of $232 an acre.
On the tillable acres, right? On what's going to be tillable.
Right, whatever's tillable.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion by Lori, second by Steve, to approve the property lease at $232 on the available, the tillable acres that are left after we get done with the watershed next spring. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, a couple points of question or discussion primarily. One being, I would be, I'm not in favor of the motion to continue, understand the concept of the unknown acres, but I think the lease is over, so it should go for bid as normal practice would be. The tenant was, and that's, to me, however lease should work, it has expired, and it is bid to the public, for the public to have an opportunity to bid on it. I also am concerned about a school board member being the tenant of the ground. I had a good conversation with Adam about this, and I personally don't think that any active farmer, who is a school board member, who's also on the committee that sets the rate for this land, should be able to be the tenant of it. And this is by no means meant anything towards Adam, but I think it maybe lacks transparency with the public when we're doing business with school board members being a property renter of our district. And I would, I don't support that, that concept, or the continuation of the lease, even though the acres are unknown. I don't think any farmer, whether, and there happens to be four of us active on this board, should be eligible to rent from the district.
Any further discussion?
This was brought to the operational committee, and it was discussed at that meeting, correct?
So, Steve?
Well, yeah, as part of our discussion and stuff, you know, we're well aware that Adam is a school board member, and when we bid it out last time, he was the best bidder for it, and he was awarded that contract. And at that point, I'm not aware of there being any laws or anything that restricts us, or restricts him from putting in a bid, nor us approving it. He just can't vote on it because he has a conflict of interest. One of the considerations we had when we talked about bidding or not bidding was the fact that he was competitive last time in the bidding process. The school districts is in, is, in different phases, have been in different phases of using the property, and we're going through a fairly large, you know, project, again, taking even more land out of production. We weren't really sure how competitive a bid, or how much bidding we would get from somebody coming in and moving equipment into farm remnant pieces around construction operations and stuff. We thought we were fortunate to have a property owner who was a bidder in the past, and even if he's a school board member, that was willing to take on those challenges, which they can be. Also, the board member provided us with a proposal to also support and help the FFA program in the school, you know, with the program and stuff, and supporting educational opportunities for students as part of that farming operation. And I'll maybe let Adam, if you'd want to comment on that proposal a little bit, too. So we felt that as an overall package, we thought it was a good opportunity for us to maintain the renter that was there, to farm, you know, parts of property that are beginning to be smaller and less productive, or are less efficient to farm, and then also being able to possibly give something back to the, to our school program also as part of that agreement. So Adam, if you'd like to elaborate maybe a little bit more about that part of it, the...
Yeah, I offered in the future, being that it's unknown for next year, I don't think it's enough to really justify it, but if we get a fair amount back, I've offered to work with the FFA on doing some kind of a crop share agreement where the FFA, and they're, not just the FFA, the egg classes can use it for agronomy, any type of crops. They could select whatever seed, fertilizer, chemical that would go out there. If they wanted to do the whole thing on their own, and they want somebody to custom farm it, I don't, I don't care. That would be up to them. That would be talks in the future. And I just offer the average rent of what Nobles County pays for one year, basing it off, not many acres going to be there. And then we'll know next year what's there, and whether it's me or it's somebody else, we decide, that's fine, I don't care. But I think that's the direction we need to go. We need to start working with our egg classes and our FFA on future classes and teaching the kids out there on district property.
And with that in mind, that is why Adam obviously did not recommend, or whatever, from the committee standpoint and stuff, but Erin and I did feel that there was value in the continuity and having someone who's familiar with what they're getting into. And we felt that for a small amount of area, that going out to, go out to leasing like that and not necessarily knowing the who we're going to get, or how they will manage their farming operations, things like this, we thought that it was maybe better to stay with a known commodity with more potential for a future return to our school educational program. And that's the reason why we went with that. So I can understand what you're saying, Matt, and we struggle with the same thing, should we go bid, and being a school board member, that type of thing. But I don't know if we could restrict, or have the right to restrict anybody from bidding on it. It's just the approval, if it's Adam, he would have to abstain, just as if you wanted to bid, you would have to abstain, too. But that's the logic behind why we made our recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, Steve was the FFA talked with, of their interest in being a part of the program?
No, we haven't had those conversations, no. We like the concept, though, of trying to do that and work with it. Here, again, this is a one-year deal. It's to get us through this transition process with the construction area going on that, and with the idea then that beyond that, we'd have to decide what we're going to do the following year, and what we want to do with the property in regard to leasing it, or making stipulations for educational programs, or how we're going to handle that. So we decided it'd be easier to get one through one more year doing it this way. We thought the method of determining a rental rate was reasonable in regard to the average for the county type of thing. I'm sure we've got some property out there that's a little bit better, and maybe some is not as good for trying to farm in farming operations. I think you had it at one point, and I think you're probably familiar with advantages and challenges of that particular property, so, and you probably can maybe enlighten us more, whether you think the amount would be a fair amount or not. We thought it was, but here again, I don't farm, and I don't think Erin does either. So we were going off what we thought would be a reasonable way of making a determination without just picking a number out of the air, and we thought that that average price seemed to be a good method to use to put a rate on it.
I think it's a good idea having the egg department involved in it. I mean, that's the way it was back in the 80s, when, before the middle school was built. It was managed by the egg, senior egg class, and there was a bid for custom farming at back then, but the senior class was the, they elected a farm manager, and that senior class made the decisions of what's going to happen on the farm. So I guess, I can see a one-year lease, and then see what happens after that, with the acres, I can end up with it, and then I just, I kind of feel the same way Matt does, maybe it should have been out on bids a little bit better, or I think it looks kind of wishy-washy, not against Adam, when a board member comes with a bid, and that's the only bid that's accepted on the farm. That's all I have.
Just to be clear, I guess we were not bidding on this, it was a proposal brought forward by the renter. And, and we thought it was a reasonable proposal, and we were willing to recommend it to the board. Now the board can disagree with our recommendation, we're just two of the seven members, and you can vote it down, and we'll probably then go to a bidding process. But we felt it was a reasonable proposal from the renter, and we thought it was worth supporting and bringing forward to the board.
Any further discussion? I think we have to understand it's a one-year, one-year lease. Next year, we'll determine the acres and probably have to bid it then, but I think an extension for one year with unknowns, with the watershed, and how it's all going to come together, and Adam's familiar with the property. I think it's, my opinion is fine to do it for one year, but it's up to the board, so...
Quite frankly, in the long run, I'd like to see us have more than a one-year lease, instead of going year to year. I'd like to, you know, once we get past this process of developing the property, and start getting some set acres in there, it would be nice to go with a longer lease than just one year. I think it allows for maybe better management of the property and stuff. If somebody isn't there for one year, not knowing whether they're going to have it the next year and the next year, it'd be better to have a little bit more extensive lease, so somebody can plan inputs into the property to make it more productive without knowing for sure if they're going to have it the next year. So I think it's probably a good idea to maybe look at a longer lease in the future. But right now, with all the unknowns, the year to year seem to be the best option for us, not knowing how much is going to be disturbed, or how much is going to be available each time. So I think that's why the year to year's been going on. But at this point, like I say, with more, a large piece of the property being impacted, it's probably a little bit more reasonable to say, let's stick with the same renter and go one more year, and then from there, we'll have a better idea of ongoing tillable acres.
Mr. Chairman, isn't it a multi-year lease currently?
I believe we entered into a three-year lease, a four-year originally.
It's a four-year lease currently, so that...
Okay.
It's been a pretty good length.
Thanks, I wasn't aware. I was thinking we're going year to year at this point.
Yeah, I knew it was more than one, I didn't know how many, but it was four years. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, now we'll go on to reports. Instructional superintendent's report.
Yeah, I just have a couple things. I gave you a handout that came from MSBA on some training opportunities, as well as some other information, so you can look at that. I did give an enrollment summary at the instructional committee. Right now, the VIBE program's about 550 students overall. We're right at about the same enrollment in all our buildings as last year, and then with the increase of the VIBE, we're a little over 3,800 students with that. And then also, I just wanted to remind you, I emailed out the long-term facility master plan, which was completed in 2019, and you can see what's been accomplished with that. Likewise, then, it's time to update that plan, and I did also email you a new identified bunch of projects, and of course, with that, you'll have to take a look at, and we'll have to have conversations of where that needs to go, either starting at the committee level or a work session. So those are my items tonight. As far as negotiations are going, right now, the school board's at approximately 10 and 3/4 on salary and benefits. The association is at 12.6 roughly, and with that, there is a bunch of what I'll call agreement, or language items, that potentially are tentatively agreed on, and then we have a couple MOU, three MOUs to deal with, and a couple other language items. So just to give you an update where we're at.
Okay, any questions for John?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. Did you say that was 2018, the last?
2019.
19?
Yep.
The resource officer position has been in the news statewide on decision made by a legislature this past session. Some districts have, and police departments have stopped that relationship. Do we have any discussions or communications with our local law enforcement over that situation?
Early on, I had a conversation with Chief Apple. At this point, they're willing to continue, and I don't see why we wouldn't be willing,
Okay, any further questions for John? Okay, hearing done, we'll go to instructional committee report.
Everything's been covered that we talked about, just with the enrollment update. I did ask about the preschool enrollment, and we're at 106 students in the preschool four-year-old program, and that's right now capped at 106, so I'll just add that to John's enrollment report.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Operations committee, Steve?
Yeah, we had a few items that weren't on the agenda and stuff. One of them, we did talk about the facility fees regarding giving breaks to certain organizations and such, and we did, we did feel that the fees we are charging cover our costs involved. We also felt that we supported and feel that it's appropriate to give breaks to programs that, in the fee structure, that are nonprofit programs that support kids in programs and stuff. An example might be like the YMCA having a community track meet type thing, of kids, all comers track thing, things like that. Also, there are probably some for-profit programs where the, where the, it's for students, you know, like a sports entity, and that if they're coming and using the facilities, that they would be given a break in the, in the fee that's charged, and that can, that could go from waiving the fee for the facility use and charging maybe for custodial cleanup, that type of thing, but that we have some leeway for those entities that are for kids and nonprofit, or if it's for-profit and stuff, there might still be some fee, but there might be reduced fee because it's dealing with kids. So we had that kind of discussion. We had, we had an update about the ice arena facility and trying to move something forward that would address our need for ice facilities in the community. We also talked a little bit about the Trojan Field scoreboard, been a little damage in there, and they're looking at, with the insurance company, of whether they repair or replace that scoreboard. It sounds like the cost to repair is almost the same cost as replacement, so we're looking into, into getting that.
into, into getting that taken care of. Also, there's some litigation, you know, having to do with the St. Cloud and, and Willington School District was identified as an example, not named in anything, but identified as an example of a community having to do with funding splits in the state, saying that it's inequitable. And they used us as an example of one of those districts that was inequitably being funded. So, so right now, we're not involved or anything like that, but it's just something that we had a quick update on that, that St. Cloud is, is pushing that and we were mentioned in their documentation as one of those that was underfunded.
And that's, that's not St. Cloud's school district, that's a, that's an advocacy group.
Advocacy, I'm sorry, yes, it's an advocacy group out of the St. Cloud that was, that was doing that in behalf of the school districts, yes. And we talked about the truth of Texas, we took care of that and the, we had a, a meeting or at halftime at the soccer game on, on September 15th, we had a dedication of the legacy wall also and stuff, so that went over very well. So, that was all I had.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions. Is there, and it was mentioned in the minutes over for the next step on the ice arena process, is there a specific plan to, to meet and to discuss those questions identified in the minutes with elected officials?
So, each of the entities that were at the table that day or organizations were to go back to their board and have a conversation. And then at that point, there would look to be a group meeting of all those entities to have a bigger, broader conversation related to an ice arena. So, at some point, probably in October at the earliest, would be a elected officials' organization representative conversation.
And as of now, the discussion has only been with the city, school, college and county? And representation from the hockey associations?
Hockey Association, county, school and city.
Okay.
And then there was another group identified and invited, but they weren't there, so.
All right. And Mr. Chairman, my other question would be the, the reasoning for my vote against in minutes at the beginning of our meeting. From our August 15th meeting, item 13 said the board discussed facility fees. It was decided the board needed to have a broader discussion on this item at the next board work session. And after the meeting, I spoke with Superintendent Landguard and said, well, let's, let's not wait to a work session, that's not on the agenda. Maybe it could be discussed at the committee level and then brought back for more discussion at the board level. I thought we had a good discussion at our last meeting. And so, I was a bit surprised to see that the committee chose to move forward and not allow any more discussion from a full board perspective.
And Mr. Chairman, it was our intention that we had the final say. That was our discussion and what our recommendation coming back to the board would be. Quite frankly, I was thought, and was under the impression that we would be having it on the agenda for discussion as your...
And it's not on the agenda.
I, I see that. And, and so therefore, like I say, we're not making a decision. The, basically we're saying is, is the process that they've been using, we, we, we agreed with, with, with the concept of giving breaks and, and what would be some of the parameters for doing that. But at this point, they were, the, the school administration's already doing that. I'm all for putting this on the agenda and having more in-depth discussion at a meeting. In fact, I, I, it was not on today's agenda, but I certainly had expected to be here and I'd certainly support putting it on the agenda at the next meeting to, to have that discussion that you're talking about. Because it was not my intent to say, our committee had the final say and the only say in what was going on. We're, we're an advisory...
It appears right now, though.
Yeah, I'm sorry it appears that way, because that was not the intent and I don't think that's the way we had discussed it at the meeting was to, to have that intent that it wouldn't come back to, we wouldn't bring it back here to have additional discussion on it. Just that we had discussion amongst ourselves and we've, and talked about the different parameters and we felt moving forward like that was what we were doing and we're all in support of that. But 100%, I want, I would like to have it come to the board and have a full board discussion. If we're going to change anything on that policy than what it is now, we should, we should bring it to the full board to have their input. So, I, I understand what you're saying and I understand why you're saying it. I agree, we should do it.
I think it comes, it comes, it needs to be a workshop session.
Okay.
Before we bring it to the board.
I was under the impression, and that was my suggestion to Mr. Landguard, was to let the committee discuss it again, maybe bring a compromise of sorts back for discussion at, at this level. And I, I don't see any, I mean, we'd have to have something specific for it to be discussed again at a, at a work session setting. But I, I guess I looked at it as, as this was a document that hadn't been reviewed since 2015. That is probably due for examination, complicated five pages that we're asking organizations. I mean, to me, if we're reviewing a document from 2019, this is a 2015 document that should be looked at, at this timeframe anyway.
I think in October, we could look at simplifying what we have, because there is a lot of different prices for everything. And I think we could discuss different fees to bring this back to your board meeting in October. Because if it is a 2015 template, I don't disagree that maybe we need to take a closer look at it as the operations committee. And yeah, we've seen all the fees and everything, but can we simplify this format? And then that way the board can all bring back their recommendations and to us in October. That's how I feel. Because I think when we've had our discussion, there was varying opinions. So, I think it is wise that we bring it back to the board for discussion somehow.
Mr. Chair, I almost think that it has to come to a work session again, just because it's such a large document, five pages, and to go through each one of those items and what's being rented facility by facility, it's going to take a little bit of time to do that unless Mr. Landguard sends it all out to all of us and we go through it and do our homework at home and then bring it to our, the operational and instructional maybe at that point, and then bring it to the board, otherwise it's going to be too big a discussion. That's my feeling.
You just make it simpler. The only cost is custodial fees. Doesn't matter what you're using, you pay for the janitor, you sign the usage, have a good time.
And, but I think that's what we have discussion on, because I don't agree with that aspect of it. I don't think with the facility should be for free to everybody to come in and use. I think there's certain people we can certainly justify having a, a free use of it, but not-for-profit people coming in and using those facilities for free, I don't agree with that. I think they need to pay a fee or, or go use other private facilities that are making a business out of this. We don't want to be in competition with them. So, there's, there's room to have some of that reduced fee for certain organizations, but I don't think it's across the board, everybody comes and uses our school facilities for free whenever they want.
Who decides who gets to and who doesn't get to?
Well, I think, I think we look at, we look at, are they serving children and nonprofits? If nonprofits are, are using our facilities, I can, you know, they don't have the resources to go out and rent facilities, I can see where that would be a, more of a special case. If it's, if it's a for-profit type organization, depending on organization, I can see us saying, hey, we'll reduce the rate or something, making it for free, I don't, I don't think that, that would, that's not something I would support. But here again, we can certainly have conversation about that. We can, you know, that, that's what it's about, so we don't have to agree on everything, but we can certainly find some compromise or, or move some proposals forward.
How soon would we need a work session? Do we have anything major?
Just some of the directional things related to facilities.
So, it might be a while if you're going to bring it to a work session.
There'll be a little bit of time before we hit that.
It'll be in October. No, it'll be prior to the first of the year.
But has there been issues, have you heard, Matt, with charging fees? That's why you're concerned about it? Because it's been in place for, since, for nine years.
Sure. It's just a philosophy. My philosophy is clearly different than some board members and administration, and that's what it comes down to. And so, I don't think we need to continue the discussion here, but I, I wanted my, especially the way that we had left the last meeting, and I think I've voiced my disappointment with the way that proceeded.
I think that if there's further discussion, it should occur during a work session meeting. And during that meeting, it should be brought to the board, the, the real costs, some actual costs currently, that the district incurs through the, like, through the rental of certain properties or certain, certain venues. If we're going to nitpick the, the different categories and prices that, from 2015, that are based on covering our costs, I think if we're going to open that can of worms, then we'll have to do some math and calculations based on current expenses of the use of facilities.
Okay.
So, I think there, there was some conversation about like, well, do we, do we open that can of worms or do we just continue with this since the, the costs, I think the operations committee felt was reasonable, but how much discretion is then given to the administration to, to veer from those, from that document? And I think that there's, there's different levels of comfort with the amount of discretion given to veering away from it.
Okay, I think it needs to come to, to a work session, discuss it. I've never had any issues raised to myself over, since 2015 about the fees being too high or too low. It's really been, nothing's ever been brought to my attention, but we can truly address it and see if we can come to an agreement on what they should be. Any further discussion?
I, I think that if, before, before we again open like that can of worms of revising a document, I think we could have the conversation about philosophy. Like, do we want to charge? Do we not want to charge? Do we want to cover our costs? Do we not care? That is maybe where we would need to have that, that discussion, because if we're, if we're going to just be like nitpicking a few bucks here and a few bucks there, like, it's, doesn't sound very exciting to me.
Okay, we'll proceed in a future date with another discussion on it, so. Any other reports? Is that it for you, Steve?
Yes.
Okay. Any other reports? Okay, 7.0, the board will go into closed session to discuss potential property purchase.